At this time, I'll call the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four County Council Meeting to Order. I want to welcome everyone who's here with us tonight. Our first item of business is to recognize the Honorable Tommy Atkins from District Three for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
At both stand. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all be here tonight and grant us safe passage home. Help us to have wisdom and guidance as we do the people's business. I pray for any of the sick, the ailing, in consideration of all others. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the privilege tonight of recognizing a number of folks who have gone to be sworn into oath of office for newly board, boards and commissions, appointed boards and commission members. When I call your name, if you're here, if you'll come and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you and give you the oath of office. We have Randy McCurry with Flint Hill Fire Tax District Board, Jesse Spain, Joshua DeSantis, Teresa Curtis, Karen Brackett Browning, Nick Maisy, and Michael Guidry, Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, John Comans, David Walker, and John Loman for the Veterans Memorial Park Advisory Committee, Natalie Hoekstra, Andrew Corrigan, Lisa Mosley with Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Doyle Roach, Carolyn Johnson, and John Neeland for the Building Board of Appeals. And this is so nice to have so many folks here with us tonight. And let me say to you, thank you on behalf of all of the council for your willingness and your dedication to serve the people in this community. You don't get paid for what you do, and you very rarely get thanked. In fact, you may get some complaints on your end, but it's critically important for us to be able to do the work of the county that we have folks like you that is willing to serve. And all of our council very much appreciates what you all do.
Madam Chair, I thought you was calling up the New York County Choir.
Yeah.
I was thinking that, too.
We've got a big crowd here tonight. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm Neil Moynke. Thank you for starting your campaign. With the sentiments, I'm charged with the ministry oath of office. So you please raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that I'm duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to a divin appoint and I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one appearance tonight. Celeste Tiller with the York County Chamber to provide the annual workforce development update.
Hi. Thank y'all so much for having us. I'm gonna try to turn this on. Thanks also on behalf of Dean Phil, the President and CEO of the York County Regional Chamber of Commerce. But we've been, we've been in this journey for about a year now, and so we wanted to give you an update of where we are and where we're going in two thousand and twenty-four. You do have presentations or copies of the presentations in front of you, and of course they'll be on the screen. So as we talked about the last time that we were here, we were trying to figure out where's our place and how do we fit in with businesses, and how do we connect our education and our workforce partners together? So kind of the basis of where we are was bringing all of those together to provide and to create a sustainable workforce solutions for the entire county of York County. So our framework has kind of begun, and we did that in two thousand and twenty-three, so we can move on to two thousand and twenty-four. So to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of the framework of how we're moving forward. First piece of that will be the advocacy, so really trying to understand what is happening at the state and federal and local levels when it comes to those connections between education and workforce, and how do we, how are our businesses, and how are they impacted with that? The second piece of that are our employer collaboratives. So those are bringing our industry partners together, understanding their pain points. The third piece of that is programming. Whenever we find out what businesses need, we'll be able to develop the program that they need to connect our K through twelve, our higher ed, with them to create the talent pipeline. Lastly, will be our talent concierge, where we are actually going in and working with our industry partners. We've already started doing that, helping them one-on-one uncover how do we create pipelines for them. The second piece of that is really where we're starting is the employer collaborative. So bringing our industries together, so working with York County Economic Development and our other partners, and understanding what our industries look like in the county. So our first two that we're starting with are hospitality and healthcare. Those are the two that we can make the greatest impact at the chamber. And so working with those industries, bringing those leaders together, understanding what's keeping those leaders up at night, and what kind of programming can we provide that connects them with our K through twelve and our higher ed. We'll move on to finance and information systems and technology and our manufacturing partners, kind of be the second phase of that. This is how we're doing it. We talked about this the last time we were here. I, of course, have spent a good time in DC, understanding what the U.S. Chamber of Commerce does with talent pipeline management. This is kind of the format that we'll use. So we'll kind of go through this strategy. The slides on, your papers look a little bit different than what's on here. They're a little jumbled, so I apologize for that. But really, really understanding what is our supply of talent and what is the demand of our talent, and what are the skill sets that they're missing? So how do we fix that? So for us, we look at it as a supply chain. So our end customer is our businesses. And so how do we take our raw material, which are our students, and kind of get them through the supply chain so they have the skill sets that they need to be successful when they get to our employers, which is what's most important for us, is to help our businesses grow? So you'll see kind of in the bottom part of the supply chain approach, you have a student slash worker. They're gonna go through the different K through twelve, higher ed, and they're gonna have some support along the way. So what are those support services? That's where we're gonna come in, is to connect those pieces. So here's where we are. So we've kind of gotten through two thousand and twenty-three and understood what our partners look like, what are they doing, what are our state providers doing? And so this is where a couple of things that we're gonna be doing. First of all is what's called Epic. This will be introduced at the beginning of March. We're gonna be partnering with Clinton College, would be our first education unit that will do this. And so it's called Employer Provided Innovation Challenges. The premise of this is to allow our students to get an opportunity to have work-based learning opportunities within the classroom. So they'll work with an employer. We won't announce that yet. We're still working on the details of which employer that will be. But they will provide a challenge to these students. These students will work together with their teacher, their professor, to kind of help solve the challenge that is presented to them. They'll learn durable skills. They'll learn technical skills, soft skills during this process. Along the way, so they have solved this problem for the company. They've understood what the company does, so there's career awareness, and they have actually kind of moved past that into career preparedness. So what do they need to be successful in the workplace? So this is our first kind of toe dipping into the water of programming that we'll be doing with our students. This is actually supported by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. They have a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to fund this. So it is no cost to our provider, which will be, of course, Clinton, and our employer, which I said will be named later. The students will also receive a credential at the end of this for their successful completion of this project. The second piece of this, which will also be with Clinton College, is our Business Expedition Program. We want our students to understand and know what is happening in York County. We talked about this a little bit last time I was here, that a lot of the times, we even ourselves, we only know exist by what we can drive by and see. Same thing with our students. So we want them to see the industries and the companies that are here, and we want them to stay in York County. So what we are doing is actually working with Clinton, who already has buses and already has the facilities in place, to take them to different businesses within York County so they can learn what is happening. So spend a half a day, talk to the leaders there, see other people that are the same age as them, understand how exactly did they get into this job. So building awareness for the business, the industry, and kind of helping the economic engine of York County. I want to share some successes for you already that we've had in the last year, and then talk about the last to wrap it up, what's happening else in two thousand and twenty-four. So the first piece of that is we worked with York Tech on removing barriers for their students in their clinical programs to be able to go into, to work with Atrium, and so helping them to kind of expand their clinical offerings. We hosted a half-day conference, which was Talent Flow. We will do that again this year. That'll be focused on our higher ed, kind of connecting them with our businesses, our higher ed students. The third thing is, is actually working with our COG, with the Catawba Regional Council of Governments, as they are working with at the state level to work on advanced manufacturing strategies for the industry. So working with them as well. Of course, I mentioned our pilot with Epic with Clinton College and our Business Expedition Program. A few more for you. We're actually working with Winthrop's Computer Science Department on creating a software program and application to help map the sixteen career clusters that are in our K through twelve system, and connecting them with the industries and the jobs that are happening in York County. So how do they, how do we keep our students here and in the industries that are in York County? We are working and consulting with YPA, York Preparatory. They're putting on a conference. So kind of working with them on making sure that their juniors and seniors are ready for that next level, whatever it might be. Last two things, working with Riverwalk Academy on kind of expanding what does the chamber do, introducing all of those things to them. And then lastly, we relaunched the nonprofit management certificate program, which I previously ran at Winthrop. They graciously let me take that and expand that on, which is helping that segment of our workforce as well. So the last thing I'll leave you with before I answer questions, if you have any, of course, this is how my contact information, but we are hosting State of Education on March twenty-seventh, which will highlight our four superintendents from the county, really helping them, helping the community understand what our school districts are doing. Talent Flow, of course, which will be our connection to higher ed, will be in September, and then myself. So I will be starting the Business Leads Fellowship Program with the U.S. Chamber, which will really help us understand what's happening at the federal level as it connects with education and workforce development. So that was a lot to be said. But any questions that I may answer for y'all today?
And you said it so quickly.
I did.
A lot of good information.
We're trying to be cognizant of your time.
Celeste, I know I speak for council. I believe that we are very thankful for the detailed report that you gave and for the leadership that Dean Phil and you all have at the chamber. It's exciting to me to see all of the organizations now working to collaborate on this, having our colleges, our universities being plugged in, along with the county and with the chamber. I think it's exciting to see those bridges being built and seeing some fruits from those labors. Do we have any questions from?
I'd like to add your comments right quick. So I've been a member of the chamber since I opened my business in nineteen ninety, and I would, I would say that, Dean, compliments to you when you came in, when you came back to York County from Lancaster to help the chamber evolve, and it has evolved. It's not just providing what business is expected to get from the chamber, right? And no offense to any other past executive directors, or presidents, or anybody else in the chamber, but you guys are looking at this from a very visionary perspective, which is having an impact on the industries that are already in York County and the industries that are thinking to come here one day, which is unbelievable. So the money that was allocated before I joined council, three hundred thousand dollars, you're telling us, you're showing us that that was a wise investment. And you and I have had other conversations, so I know what's coming. And it's just really exciting for what's going on here in York County. So thank you for thinking out of the box and actually taking the revenue that we allocated to you and putting it to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I just want to piggyback off that. And a lot of your comments were right along the lines of my thoughts. First of all, thank you. Great presentation. Excellent. The work that y'all are doing is amazing. And what we're, you know, as we move forward from an economic development, we're seeing this, this whole metamorphosis going on from identifying need to training to bringing in businesses based on the ability to have a talent pool ready for them. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a citrical process, but it's, but it's working. And so I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think that we got a lot of exciting things to come in, in the near future, and looking forward to exciting news as we go along. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, of course.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. I don't have, do we have any folks? We have no one who's signed up for our public forum session. So we move now to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion on consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non. Consent agenda is approved. We move now to our first public hearing. For council, that is found on page six of the agenda. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter one fifty-four Land Development Code to exempt school developments from grand tree protection requirements to provide an option for industrial development on fully wooded sites to mitigate grand tree removal exclusively through fee and lieu payments to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anything from staff before we open up the public hearing? Okay. At this time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you want to speak, if you'll come forward and give your name and address before providing comments?
Good evening. John Gossett, five seven one seven, Lake Wylie Road, Lake Wylie, South Carolina. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for addressing this. This was something that definitely needs to be addressed. This exemption, I feel, should have been put in place all along. So for the council to address it now, to correct it, a lot of us are very grateful for that. So thank you for that. I would like to offer two suggestions for council to consider. One of them is, along the same lines as the school, we all know why the school exemption is being looked at, because it's taken money from the taxpayers that was earmarked for our kids' education. But I would submit that that should apply to anything that's taxpayer-funded. Let's just use the animal shelter as an example. You're looking for a place to build a new animal shelter. You know, somewhere, it's gonna be sixteen million dollar animal shelter get built. You secure a piece of property, be it for the animal shelter, be it for satellite, county office, whatever it may be, but it's a county facility, and there's trees on it. And they gotta be cleared because you gotta build there. Well, if the county then has to do, like what the school districts are having to do, mitigate and write a check to the grand tree fund, or whatever it is at the county level, where's that money coming from? Same place it's coming from for schools. It's coming from us, the taxpayers. So ultimately, we're the ones that are, you know, getting the bill. We're the ones that are paying for that. It's not like a developer coming in and you're trying to encourage the developer to do something to save trees. In this case, we, the taxpayers, are the ones that are getting stuck. We're getting penalized, however you want to look at it. So my view is, if it's taxpayer-funded, be it the school, be it a county facility, anything that is taxpayer-funded, that exemption should apply to that. It should be an umbrella, because you're trying to protect the taxpayers and not penalize us for something that we have no control over. Because if you, if you pay out a bunch of money for the grand tree thing, and then you run short, well, you go back and reach in our pockets for more. So it's just a circle that I just think is unfair to the taxpayers. The other thing I'd like to offer for consideration is the definition of grand tree. I've got a good bit of experience with pine trees, because we got a couple hundred acres that we grow timber on. So we, we got several decades of knowledge with pine trees. Pine trees, in my opinion, are not quote-unquote grand trees. The thing that's grand about a pine tree is how much lumber you're gonna saw out of that tree. Because that's what they're, that's what they are. They're, I look at pine trees as lumber that hasn't been harvested yet. It's like a crop. I've been on military reservations that have thousands of acres of pines. I've been on public land. We've got our land. Sooner or later, those pines are harvested, like a crop. And, you know, to treat it as, for the grand tree ordinance is to protect canopy. Well, a pine tree, generally speaking, doesn't provide a lot of canopy. It's by design trunk to saw lumber out of. The limbs are at the top, and they, they don't make a lot of canopy. But that creates a problem. Pine trees standing alone are a hazard for wind and ice. And let me, generic question, not to be answered, just put it to the council. How many people here, or in the audience for that matter, want a big pine tree close to their house? Thirty, forty, fifty feet from your house? Nobody. And we all know why. They don't have a great root system to begin with, but they're also susceptible to a couple of diseases. I got a list of them here, but I won't read them. And pests that, generally speaking, the southern pine beetle, then there's weevils, nematodes, moths, there's several insects that target pine trees. They don't target oaks, or poplars, or anything like that. They target pine trees. Pine tree is a coniferous tree. Well, that's pines and cedars, generally speaking, around here. If a cedar tree falls on your house, what's gonna happen? Not a lot, because they may, generally speaking, they're big poofy trees, and they just kind of wind up leaning up against your house. A thirty-foot-tall loblawli pine that's about so big around, let a nice storm come in, because it has needles year-round, that's the one that comes down. Ice forms on it, it's heavy at the top, and a gust of wind. And if it's anywhere near somebody's house when it comes, or if it hits someone's house nearby, it won't just damage the house. A tree like that will go from the ridge line and the roof slam to the foundation. And anybody that's in that house and the path of that tree is graveyard dead. I mean, it's destructive. So, you know, if, if you don't want a pine tree near your house, then don't cause developers to leave them near what's gonna be other people's houses. It, it just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. I see a pine tree in that setting as a liability. I got a few other facts, but I think I pretty well hit the highlights there of my concern with treating a pine tree as a grand tree. I am fully in favor of saving what we would consider grand trees. I don't want to see the trees gone. You know, we talking trees that produce food for the wildlife, be it nuts, berries, whatever, creates a big canopy. A lot of your hardwood trees create cavities for wildlife to nest in. But your pine tree is not in that category. So I just don't see a pine tree as a grand tree. So again, thank you for addressing this topic tonight, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, my name's Amanda. I live at seventeen twenty-three Rutledge Hills Drive, New York, South Carolina. Short and sweet, just want to say that I agree with Mr. Gossett that, while I'm appreciative of the schools being a part of this, I think it should encompass anything or any facility that uses taxpayer money. It's just, as he said, it's circling through. So I think it needs to be an exempt for any of those that are included, that are paid for by taxpayer, taxpayer-funded money, so that that money can then be used more fiscally responsible in other areas that need it the most. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion closed.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Yes. A motion to approve with an amendment to add on to exempt not only schools but government buildings as part of the amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I like this, I like Mr. Gossett's terminology. He said county facilities, but are we gonna broaden this to municipal facilities?
Well, I think any government building.
Is that, are we, are we picking the right terminology?
Well, municipal doesn't, we don't, we don't make their ordinances to South County.
Right. Right. Yeah. Good point. Stand to be corrected on that comment.
Mr. Roddy, I'll keep reminding you.
Thank you.
I'll just say, I appreciate those comments as well. And, and over the last several years, I've had more conversation about trees than I ever saw myself be a part of in all of my, close to fifty years. I have a birthday coming up, but it's, it's been an eye-opener just going through some of this discussion, hearing what affects the real world from developers to home buyers, to homeowners, to just anybody individually trying to do something in our, in our great county. Certainly, I would like to ask our staff, what, if any, situational scenario, would we classify a pine tree as a grand tree? Are grand trees being spelled out specifically by their type, or just the size?
So currently, in the ordinance today, if you have a loblawli or shortleaf pine, it's a grand tree if it reaches thirty-two inches diameter, breast height, so it's, it has the highest threshold to meet versus any other species of tree, which comes up to twenty-four for, and smaller for some other species. The long-leaf pine, though, would fall under that twenty-four-inch category. It's a different, hardier species than the loblawli and the shortleaf pine.
So would any of those that we would, could deem a grand tree, or any of those type trees being used as harvest-type trees, or what Mr. Gossett said, have been planted for the specific purpose of being harvest? Because I know where I work at, we use a lot of wood. We use pine trees. I don't know the exact type that we prefer, or the ones that we don't. But I know we, we work with land developers who harvest trees, and I can't imagine someone having to replace something that was planted for the purpose of being harvested to use for a commercial-type product.
Yes. So any tree that's been planted specifically for agricultural purposes, silver cultural purposes, they're planted to be harvested for timber, they're exempt from the grand tree ordinance as well. So typically, if you've got a site that historically has been used to harvest timber, and now they are proposing to change the underlying land use, they're gonna develop it with something, with structures, buildings, uses, all that, they'll do their final cut, so their final harvest, so they won't have to abide by the grand tree regulations for any of the planted timber species.
So my last question. So in your professional opinion, we shouldn't have to specify anything dealing with any type of pine? Will, you think our ordinance is good to where that won't entrap someone that's possibly developing a piece of property, and we go out and find a thirty-two-inch, and say, wait a minute, you're gonna have to replace this, because you're building a house, you're building a commercial site? What, what do you think about those comments that just made?
Well, I understand some of the comments there. A couple of caveats to think about. So the ordinance already stipulates that a tree needs to be in a healthy condition in order to meet the definition of grand. So if it's unhealthy and is likely to fall, an arborist can state, this is an unhealthy tree, it's likely to cause damage, then it's not even considered a grand tree by definition in our, in our ordinance today. Additionally, thirty-two inches is a pretty sizable pine tree, so you're not gonna get a whole lot that reach that diameter.
All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non. Motion carries unanimously. We move now to our second public hearing item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter one fifty-five zoning code to modify the minimum separation between tattoo and body piercing establishments and other uses and districts to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there any report from staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to our old business item, rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number twenty-three dash twenty-three, tax map number six nine two zero 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 four two and zero seven four to rezone from UD to LI, two-point-five acre portion in District Five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is, this is my district, and I will say, there was a couple of citizens who showed up to ask some questions, and they had some concerns. I have spoken with Mr. Page, who has operated the, they work on race cars there, and they've been doing that, born and raised here, and they've been doing that for years and years. for years and years. Um, it's on a, a strange triangular, um, property. What they're trying to do is to square that off so that they can have some additional parking and perhaps at some point add on to the building to continue to do their current operations. I think there was some confusion about what's gonna go there, where are the access points. It's my understanding, and I'd like to be corrected if I'm wrong on this, but that the only access will be on Anderson, which is the main thoroughfare. There are no access points on Neely Store or Leslie, which is where the residential areas are. There is no plans for trucking, um, and this is not, this does not set precedent for other parcels in the area that may want to do this. This is one of those situations where there's UD, and in order to marry it up, um, it needed to, to go to Light Industrial. I still have concerns that Light Industrial is too far to go to have something like this. This, to me, is more of, of a, a smaller commercial-type thing, and I think once you label it Light Industrial, it can pose problems, but the fact that it is only access to Anderson, um, and I've communicated with the folks who came out previously, um, they seem to have their issues resolved. Um, I'm comfortable with moving forward with second reading on this. Are there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We do not have any new business tonight, and we have no committee reports or citizen concerns. Do we have any council member, new knowledge and comments?
Yes.
Mr. Rockabye.
All right, perfect. So, I do wanna mention to everybody in the audits and everybody listening, the county council, you probably heard last week that Nick Saban resigned as the head football coach of Alabama, right? What you may not have heard, who made the announcement? Who made the announcement on behalf of ESPN? Do you know who that was? Dean knows, because we were in school with him. Chris Low graduated from Rock Hill High School, went to school here in his youth. Uh, he's a huge University of Tennessee fan, but he wrote for the Herald, and now he is the senior sports writer for ESPN. He made the announcement for ESPN last week, and he's a citizen of York County. I just think it's amazing that somebody stuck with a career and worked their way to the top, because that is the top, to be a senior writer with ESPN. So, congratulations to Chris, Chris Low, and York County's a better place for him, for him having been here. Um, now, I wanna mention this, and we'll take a couple minutes, and I know we're about to adjourn to going to executive session.
Thank you for remembering that.
Yes, I'll keep this brief. So, um, I'm actually in my first year, finishing my first year of serving on county council, and it has been a real pleasure to have made it through my first year. I have one more year, and I'm up for reelection, uh, and I am gonna run again for one more term. That's my plan, because I'll be sixty-two if I get reelected, and, uh, I'm gonna try to groom somebody else to take my spot after I serve another term. But I do wanna mention a couple of things that, um, I paid attention to over the last year, and some things that are on my radar for me as a council member, and maybe for some of you to consider thinking about. Uh, so I'll start with this, uh, kind of a list of priorities for me, and I'll be brief. I'm not gonna go through these in detail, but I personally wanna look for more constructive ways to work effectively with the council members. I'm learning how to do things behind the scenes and even publicly, and it is a strong learning curve to serve on council. This is, if you've never served publicly, you've served on boards and commissions, it's different than serving in this capacity, I can tell you that. So, it is a strong learning curve. When you see a new council member come up here and they look a deer in headlights, they are a deer in headlights, I can promise you, because I've been there and still there on occasion. Allison corrected me today. So, there's a good example. But anyway, I look forward to working better with council members, county staff, all municipalities, agency-serving, the York County citizens and businesses, and understanding more of the citizens', citizens' concerns throughout York County. I look forward to us developing a stronger relationship with our elected officials, and those officials specifically are our House and Senate members in Congress, our state delegation, local municipalities, sheriff and municipal police departments, and the judges, because, uh, there are some strong conversations that we could have with them that could benefit us, especially our state delegation, not to overlook our federal representatives. Um, I'm not gonna get into specifics on this, but I think that in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, I think we need to look at a master plan for transportation. I won't get into the specifics on this, but I'm, I'm trying to educate myself on transportation and the needs. When you think about it, just announced last week, South Carolina is the fastest-growing state in the United States, and York County is the second fastest-growing county out of nine that surround us. This issue's not going away, so we have to be as intentional as possible to plan for what is coming, whether we want it or not, and if we stick our head in the sand, somebody will use their language. They said, we're gonna get leapfrogged. We're already getting leapfrogged on some things, and I'll get to those points in just a second. Economic development, this came up when we were talking about a fee in lieu for somebody, uh, and so I'll just paraphrase it like this. I just said, South Carolina is the fastest-growing state in the United States, York County's the second fastest in the county. Well, when you think about economic development, and you don't want to give away what you don't have to give away, that's a good thing. It's a good thing for the taxpayers, it's a good thing for York County. But what else do we need to be doing to make York County the place somebody wants to choose to come to place a business versus another county without giving away too much? That's a deeper conversation. I'm gonna leave it at that, but I think we have opportunity there. Next one, just don't read too much into this, but be open-minded to the unintentional consequences of growth, not only in South Carolina but York County. That is affordable and attainable housing to rent and own here in York County. That's an uncomfortable conversation. I met with an HOA recently, and opened my mouth, and I said something about this. The average age of the group was probably sixty-plus. This did not go over well with them, because they didn't want affordable housing near them. I didn't define what it was. That, this is a broad conversation, but I'm just saying, we are a county that is growing. As Tommy has said, we're growing, we're not gonna stop growing. People can continue to come here, but you gotta have affordable places for people to live, because if you don't, it leads to item seven, and that is homelessness. I'm not gonna get into that into detail, but there are three stages of homelessness, uh, that pathways is identified. I think this is something that we need to have a conversation about, get educated about. That doesn't mean that we need to allocate monies necessarily. Uh, I know to my left there, there are thoughts going on to the left of me, but that doesn't mean that we have to allocate monies to this issue, but we do need to recognize it, we need to embrace it, and we need to come up with a plan to deal with homelessness here in York County. Otherwise, we can stick our head in the sand, the problem could potentially get worse. And it does cost us, whether you ignore it or not, ask the Sheriff's Department. Mental health. We can all agree that since COVID, mental health has taken a turn. Brandon Guffey held the seat that I'm sitting in right now, and Brandon Guffey has gone to the State House, and he's passed legislation about mental health. This is a serious issue, and this is one we can't, we can't hide from, but we need to get educated on this topic to decide if this is any responsibility for the county to assume and the taxpayers to assume a role in. So, I believe mental health is something we need to think about. Just recently, we did take action, uh, during the month, our first meeting of January, we took action on parks, so I think we do need a vision for our parks, green space, and whether tourism is something that the county wants to attempt to attract. Do you want to play a role in bringing tourism into York County, or do you wanna leave that up to, to the municipalities? The last is financial priorities, and we're gonna talk about one area of the county, that being Lake Wiley, will probably come up on our February meeting agenda, and after digging into that a little deeper and trying to understand that, I've learned a lot, as many of you have, through this discussion of learning more about the six-sixty separation of uses. It has me think about, thinking about this, and that is, there are areas of York County that are not developed yet. Highway two seventy-four fifty-five forty-nine, Christie's area on the east side of York County, Tommy and my area on the west side of York County are not developed yet. But it's gonna come, and it's gonna come intentionally or unintentionally. When water and sewer gets out there, it's gonna happen, right? It, it happens with well and septic, but it's gonna happen at a rapid pace with the other. So, I think this is a conversation for council to get our arms around, talking to the right people that can educate us. Maybe there's an aesthetic look that we want to, we want to create for the unincorporated areas of York County, so that when you go into those areas in the future as they develop, it has a distinct look. Um, maybe there needs to be zoning that encourages and protects the look and feel of rural York County. And then lastly, along the financial priorities, there's a second penny we're not taking advantage of, and if we took advantage of that second pennies and pennies for progress, what could we do with that that would be beneficial to the second fastest-growing county out of nine surround us, that surround us, and a part of the fastest-growing state in the United States? So, I'll just end with those thoughts, and I appreciate you listening. There are probably other things that I have not come up with that I'll share with you later, but those are my top ten as of today. Thank you.
Mr. Roddy?
Boy, you dropped the bombshell on us today. I was cringing when you started talking about transportation, affordable housing, low-income homelessness. These are huge, big-ticket items, um, but since you brought up those, those are some, some interesting topics, and I think it's gonna be, make for a good retreat that we're gonna have, uh, coming up, I think in February it is. So, I look forward to having those conversations in a, in a retreat forum. But I'll, you know, in real time, something I think that this council can handle in a much faster pace that has been a topic of conversation since I got on council. Every time, we, we wanna do a lot of great things, because it's something that needs to be done over here. There's forty different other avenues that we can do things in. We have yet to have a serious conversation about a business license. We've yet to have a serious conversation about how do we tackle stormwater issues. We've yet to have a serious conversation on how do we get down to the ground level to help a small business? These are things that I think we can tackle well before we jump out there, a billion-dollar industry with transportation, because I think the last time we had a similar conversation about connecting to North Carolina on some kind of rail system, it was in the billions of dollars. We've had a similar conversation about transportation. Everybody wants to, we all wanna solve an affordable housing issue. Everybody wants to solve a homeless issue. Everybody wants to provide low-income housing. It's just like landfills and jails. Nobody wants it near them. Everybody wants to do something about it, but when you talk about putting a low-income or affordable housing somewhere, you can't put that near my half million dollar house. So, we gonna have that issue in York County, because houses now are going for three, four-hundred-thousand dollars, and how dare you come next to my neighborhood, what half million dollar home, and say you wanna put a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar house? We'll get run out of York County if we start trying to dictate some of those, and I'm not here to dispute anything that, that you brought up, but I love the fact that you've mentioned all these, but we got so much more on a much smaller scale that I'm looking forward to bringing up in our retreat. And I know this section wasn't supposed to kinda get air out of laundry of what we see , uh, down the way, because we do have a long executive session, but these are some of the, the business license, the stormwater, and how do we start a small business health program right here in York County, has been on the radar for, for many, many years. Uh, but I, hopefully, we can get down to some of those, and I think we can tackle some of these type issues, uh, in the very near future, because just with this last storm that we had come through, I'm pretty sure y'all got this many calls that I've gotten about flooding and unincorporated areas. How do we, you know, my phone was just blowing up with all that rain. How do we, what are we gonna do with the stormwater? That's a huge issue. You know, we, we had a similar, a smaller conversation years ago, couple of years ago, uh, about instituting a stormwater fee. That fell off the table. But we can't fix stormwater if we're not collecting something to address stormwater. And I guarantee you, if you all didn't get a call about water after this last storm, your phone must've been turned off, because it was blowing up on my end. So, these are some of the things that, yeah, we got some big-ticket items that we really need to look at, but we have a lot more of these smaller issues that I think we can get down to the ground and put our heads together and start to work at that level. So, I'm done.
I, I just wanna wish you a happy birthday. I love it when, when fellow council members catch up with me a little more.
When's his birthday?
Oh, it's coming up.
When's his birthday?
Twenty-fifth?
Oh. Don't you expect?
You were trying to feel bad.
Oh, you gotta wear a suit.
Don't you expect me to wear a suit?
Yeah, you gotta wear a suit.
I'm your boy.
No, you gotta, man. That's it.
Anyone else?
All right. Well, yeah, you go ahead. So, first of all, um, you, you know, it's interesting, you know, since you brought up a couple of good things. I think our retreat's gonna be very exciting, and we're gonna have a lot to talk about in there. Um, you know, again, when you look at running for, uh, running again, I'm in my, going in my fourth year of my first term. I will be running for a, a second term, just to share that with everybody. Um, and then, just real quick, back to your comments that you made, um, transportation, you know, with the, with the access transportation in Fort Mill Tiki Kay, there was an announcement, and, and I, you know, Greg did a great job doing the video on there, but, um, that program for elderly and disabled in Fort Mill Tiki Kay, they utilized over eleven thousand miles of, of utilization out of there, and it's two thousand fifty cents a trip, and it's managed from within York County. It's a self-managed program from within the, uh, Council for Aging. It's a great program. Um, second thing is, I wanna make sure we're focusing on small business as another thing we're gonna talk about with retreats, because there's a lot of need in small business out there, so we really need to be focused on that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. My comments are, uh, circled around the storm and the fact that my phone did blow up with pictures, uh, in Regent Park. Um, the house that we saw, um, a couple of months ago, that a boat had to come up and get the folks out, that house flooded again, and, um, it was new owners, and they did have flood insurance, which was awesome. But I do wanna, uh, shout out to Regent Park residents who have rallied around this family. Uh, it has, it is really, uh, special to see a community come together, and, um, particularly, um, I tried to get down the street, hopped out. This mom and her little boy and a dog were standing in a garage with a river flowing by them, and, uh, we were trying to, you know, get, get them some help. So, it's, um, the air, that area is in need, and so when we talk about big projects, we cannot forget, um, what a lot of us ran on, and that's infrastructure and, and areas that have really, um, just been ignored or does not have the support, uh, with situations that we have. And we talked about a hundred-year floodplain. I think that was maybe a five-year floodplain. I don't know. It's, but it was not that long ago when that house flooded, so, anyway, they made it through, and, and thank you, residents of Regent Park, for pulling together.
I ain't got a whole lot to say other than, uh, what Watson Bump was talking about. Um, I would like to urge constituents, I guess you'd say, for all of us in the district to understand that a lot of times, everyone's ability, will, or whatnot, is not the same. Everybody don't like the same thing, and everybody's pocketbook surely is not the same. And a lot of times, that should be took in consideration instead of jumping the gun on a lot of the calls and whatnot that we get.
Some grace, some grace we need to extend to one another. Um, wow, it's exciting to hear all this ambitiousness coming out of council, and I can't wait to see the enthusiasm when we have all these workshops and committee meetings that are associated with some of these big-ticket items that council wants to tackle. Um, I do wanna bring up a couple of things. At the last meeting, we talked about the solid waste management plan. My understanding from staff is that, that if we are due to update that, that will be coming up in this year's budget. I wanted, that, that was the response that I got from staff. If you wanna elaborate, that's fine, but I do think that that's something that we're gonna be discussing and, and we'll need to figure out the best route to put that in, because it needs to be updated, and those were questions that some other folks had asked, um, previously that we need to address. Also, I think it would be really important, this is a question that I've been asking on the litter, litter program. These are, these are folks that don't understand what the county's program is towards litter. I think it would be a good idea to, um, to put that out in, in a notice or announcement, and also for us to take, most of the roads are state roads, which are maintained by the state, and it used to be that this, um, correctional department would come out and pick up, and we could call, um, Public Works and ask them to do that. They stopped doing that, which is frustrating, but my understanding is they've started that back up, and I would love to see the county take advantage of that program at the state, and let's see if we can't, um, create some, um, some efforts to get that done and see that, get, get that moving. I get a lot of calls on that. Last thing I'll say is kudos to the, to Greg Suskin and the website. I, I will tell you, I didn't realize that they were doing such a massive overhaul. I had to go use it to answer a constituent question. It was a lot easier to maneuver what I was looking for. I haven't spent a whole lot of time on it, but, um, when I pulled it up, I was like, oh, this is new, and it does look nice, and I'm looking forward to hearing the community, uh, comments on that to make that better. Um, I think everybody talked tonight, so do we have a motion for executive session?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, personal matter, county manager search, receipt of legal advice, litigation update.
We're gonna move into executive session for those items. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move straight into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.